I'll call this meeting the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Jalka?
Here.
Swart?
Here.
Please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're taking a motion on the agenda as proposed or amended?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the agenda is approved. Next we'll move on to public comments. Is there anybody first in the room? In the public that wishes to speak on something that's not an agenda item? Seeing none, is there anybody online? All right, we will move on to claims and payments.
Have a motion?
Yeah. Yeah, so it's a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against various settlements of such claim as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, yes, Michelle.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is four hundred ninety-six thousand, forty-three dollars and thirty cents, with no invoices from the sixty-forty. And we do have a few construction payments we're making today. There is one on the jail lobby for about sixty-eight thousand. And the Bison Equipment we're paying for, which is exciting, that's fifty-nine thousand. And then we are returning refunds to the participants in Consolidated Communications. That totaled all the cities and counties about eighty-eight thousand. Everything, most everything appears to be in order. I have a couple of questions to resolve after the meeting yet.
All right, any questions, Board? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jalka?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes. Next we'll receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer. I just want to give you a quick roads update before I move on to a couple other topics. Secondary road staff is out cutting trees this week and then doing maintenance around the shops and taking care of the equipment. A couple things I wanted to bring your attention to is last week we worked with Gabby DeWitt to get information out to the public concerning the warming temperatures this week and the gravel roads. We suspect they will be, they are already a bit soft. That will probably be increasing over the week if we get warmer temperatures. It does sound like we will be having freezing temperatures now at night, so that that will be good. We are urging people that need to haul, grain haulers, for example, to be out there first thing in the morning while the roads are still frozen. Another topic for you, yesterday in Iowa Legislature, House File 2092 was introduced that would require county employees who operate mortgagers, who have less than five years of experience operating a mortgager, to have training. The training would consist of, must include, but is not limited to, ideal roadway profile designs and application, proper grading techniques to ensure sufficient drainage on roadways, and standard roadway and shoulder maintenance methods. We do offer training through the Iowa Local Technical Assistance Program, but generally we do not give our employees that training until we've, they are in the mortgager position. So we do have, I do have some concerns about this legislation. I'll be talking to that. It was introduced by one of Blackhawk County's legislators, so I'll be talking with them and seeing what the concerns are and keeping you involved. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Thank you for doing that. I think that's very helpful sometimes, just to have that conversation with others.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Sheriff Thompson, I've got a couple updates for you. Number one, I have the pleasure this morning to swear in a new deputy to the sheriff's office, one that you all didn't approve. And that is a black furry puppy. Her name is Mary, and she comes to us from New York. She comes from a program called Puppies Behind Bars. And she is actually a mental health advocate dog. She's called a facility canine, and she comes from a program called Puppies Behind Bars. She started at eight weeks of age with an incarcerated female inmate that has been trained to teach her all the cues and training on how to respond to mental health crises. And she will work with our community engagement officer, Carla Altenbaummer, to do mental health crisis response, suicidal subject, mental health transports, work with our peer support team within the facility, and work with those kinds of incidents. So we're very excited. There's only a couple of dogs like this in the state of Iowa, and now the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Office has one. So we will, we will be rolling her out and introducing her to the public here very shortly. I'll be putting the press release out yet later this morning. But she raised her right hand and swore and affirmed that she will follow the rules and regulations of the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Office this morning. We will be introducing her, as well as we're going through the punch list items on the redesign of the front lobby and the administrative office area. So probably in the next couple of weeks, we will have an open house, grand reopening, whatever you want to call it, and we'll have her on hand for that as well. Like I say, in the next couple of weeks, we'll put a press release out on that as well, so to show everybody. The artwork is going up now and, and just doing some minor punch list stuff.
What kind of dog is she?
She is a black lab.
Okay.
Yep. So we're increasing our diversity at the department as well. No, she's awesome. She loves to be pet. Instead of, you know, stand back, canine, don't touch, she's one that says, please pet me. So she's fantastic. She'll be a great addition to the agency. Any questions for me?
Good morning, Board. Gabby DeWitt, Marketing Coordinator. First update, three weeks into the position, and I'm working to get to know the departments, learning what they do. There's a lot, being a twenty-three-year county employee, there's a lot that the county does that I didn't know about, and it's really exciting to hear what the departments are doing. So I've been meeting with a lot of the department heads, still have several to meet with, finding out what communications work that they do and how I can best support them and help them meet the priorities that they have. And then another, kind of to what Kathy was talking about, the roads, and then we had all that fun snow at the beginning of the month and getting information out about that. Then the brand committee is continuing to meet and make progress, and we're hoping to have something for the board for approval probably in February. And it will come with a full brand guide so that you can kind of see how we anticipate using it and how it will impact all the departments that, that choose to use maybe a specialized logo or go with just the, the new Blackhawk County logo. My goals for the position are to increase our social media interactions, get some more stories out there, just kind of elevate the things that we're doing here at Blackhawk County so that more people like me find out about all the cool stuff we're doing, like of puppies behind bars. Can I answer any questions for you?
No, I think you're, you're off to a great start. It's, it's been great these few weeks to be able to catch the news and hear something about Blackhawk County.
Great.
Getting out into the community, and so that's really great.
And even more of the social media things too, I think heightened too, so that's been great. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we have lots, lots that we can do and can be kind of overwhelming, but it's super exciting. And to be this far into my county career and having something totally new, it's, it's really exciting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Gabby didn't mention that her very, very first day in our department, she kind of got, the audit was released that day, so her very first day in, she got to work on a news release for that, and then there was something else a day or two later. So we've put her to work immediately, and it's great having her in our area. Wanted to say that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials wish to give an update today? Not, we will move on to the minutes approved from the January twenty-third meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the minutes are approved. We will have a hearing, bid opening on the multi-departmental remodel project coming up a little bit later in the meeting. Next we'll move on to the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes. Next we'll move on to contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the agreement between Blackhawk County and NAF Care Incorporated for medical, mental, and dental services at the Blackhawk County Jail effective February first through 2024 through June thirtieth, 2027, with a contract term total of eight million, eight hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-two cents, and two one-year option renewal periods following the contract be approved and the chair be directed to sign the same as recommended by Tony Thompson, Sheriff.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded? Yes. Go ahead, Nate.
If you have any questions, I'm here for you.
Any questions for Nate today?
I was thinking, you, you mentioned, I think, some of the things you'd done, kind of from a cost savings standpoint in negotiating with this. I thought that was important maybe to bring forward.
Yeah, from the time that we got this approved, or I mean approved NAF Care back in September, October, whenever it was, in the fall. There was two things I wanted to look at. One was that they had added a full-time provider in there. I didn't think that was really necessary, so I talked to them, and they reduced that from a full-time down to two point two FTEs, one to help the provider seeing patients and one to help the mental health care provider. So by taking that down essentially from a one full-time employee to point four FTE, that's about between nine and ten thousand dollars a month over the life of the contract that we were able to save there. And then another thing we did was, the contract goes into effect February first. We extended the first year out essentially to a seventeen-month contract, so we get that lower rate for the extra five months. Plus then going forward, it aligns everything on the fiscal year too, so the new price increases will be July first, so. So about a few months at the lowest rate, plus it lines it up to hopefully make things a little bit easier for Michelle.
And I know you'd mentioned Mike had already reviewed it, so everything's good.
Yeah, Mike's reviewed it. We have back and forth. It's a couple of questions. We've run it through PDCM. We've done everything with that, and everything looks good on our end, so.
Thanks.
All right, Board, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Jalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes. The resolution is approved. Next we'll move on to other business. This is a motion that the travel request submitted by Amanda Fezremeyer, Human Resources Director, be approved and direct chair to sign for the same. Two thousand five hundred fifty dollars to attend the National Public Employee Labor Relations Association Annual Conference in Savannah, Georgia, April seventh through the tenth.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 The motion is approved. Next we'll move on to, this is a motion that the appointment of Rhonda McRina as a member of the Blackhawk County Board of Health for a three-year term to expire on December twen, on December thirty-first, 2027 be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Dan and I both interviewed her. We were just really excited that someone with kind of her credentials and experiences is willing to serve Blackhawk County. All right, any other discussion or questions, Board? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, the motion carries. Next to it is, it's nine fifteen. This is a hearing, so it's bid opening of the multi-department remodel project to accommodate the remodeling of the election and treasurer's office and resulting in the offices of the auditor, accessor, attorney, and basement common area is also being impacted. First is a motion to receive and place and file proof of publication, no as of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next we'll move on, the motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments are received.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any written comments, Mr. Veder?
No, sir.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Next we will move on to the bids to be received, open and read. The bid deadline was three PM, Monday, January twenty-ninth, 2024.
This is Tom. What do we have budgeted for this?
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Facilities Director. The construction budget for this was one million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So the first one here is from, we did receive two bids, and you should have a bid tabulation sheet. First bid was Cardinal Construction Waterloo. It's where all received on time. And we have received the bid security. Okay, so the, the base bid from Cardinal Construction was one million, six hundred forty-one thousand dollars. Then if you go down to the alternates, alternate number one, restroom scope, one hundred, seven thousand, two hundred dollars. Alternate number two, partition scope, thirty-one thousand. Alternate number three, six A cabling, twenty-three thousand, one hundred dollars. Alternate four, removal of furniture, twenty-four thousand. And I don't have my calculator, so the last line item is those alternates plus the base bid. I can add that up real quick for you if you'd like.
Sure.
Michelle already did.
Did she? I need a calculator too. Carol did too, probably. Yeah, it was real close.
Thank you. So we've got a total base bid plus the selected alternates of one million, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred dollars.
Very close, yeah.
All right. The next one is from Peters Construction, Waterloo, Iowa. And this is the bid bond has been received. Okay. Base bid received from Peters Construction is one million, five hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. One, five, one, zero, two, one, five. Down to the alternates, alternate number one, one hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and eighty. One, zero, eight, two, eight, zero. Alternate number two, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. Two, four, nine, nine, four. Alternate number three, twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. Two, one, eight, seven, zero. Alternate number four, ten thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. Nope, I'm sorry, strike that. Ten thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars. One, zero, five, five, one. That's a, a total bid of one, six, seven, five, nine, one, zero. And that is it for the bids.
Thank you. Motion that the Board of Supervisors review and place on file the bids and allow time to review said bids as recommended by Rory Giving, Facilities Director.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the motion carries. Next we'll move on to the work session, this is discussion, possible board action, consideration, all aspects of the Blackhawk County budget.
Good morning, Board. Today we are going to hear from the Conservation Department first, and then Information Technology. So I will turn it over to Mike.
Good morning, Board. Mike Kendrickson, Director with County Conservation. I get some things sorted, sorted out here a little bit. Our mission statement, so to speak. Let me read that. I don't know that we've ever read that in here. Maybe it has been, but would be nice to hear it again. Blackhawk County Conservation Mission is to enhance the quality of life and stimulate economic development in Blackhawk County by providing open space, outdoor recreation, education, and resource manager, management. We maintain over nine thousand acres of public land, including wildlife areas, prairies, river accesses, parks, campgrounds, public gun, and archery ranges, cabins, lodges, bike trails, geological sites, wildlife exhibits, and the Hartman Reserve Nature Center. Within that sheet, you'll see some of our, some of our numbers of people, which I think are pretty impressive. Almost eighty thousand people through our camping and cabins and shelters and lodges. And the numbers that you see here are only numbers that we can keep track of. You know, we can't keep track of the hikers and the people that bike, birdwatch, hunt fish, launch boats. So it's, it's really, you know, tens and tens of thousands more people that we don't even keep track of. This is only what we see. So anyway, we, we serve a lot of people, and we're very, we're very proud of that, and
Mike, do you break this, this down further as to whether or not people are coming from outside the county?
We, it's hard for us to do that. We've actually gotten some agencies that have contacted us with the ability to do that. Obviously, they want us to buy their, their service. We kind of got a little bit of a free look at one of those, and so we just gave them, they wanted a, they wanted a sample site. So we gave them Big Woods Lake Campground. And they gave us a, they took that information and they ran with it, and then they gave us about a thirty-minute finding. And yes, what they can do is absolutely amazing. They can tell us where these people came from. They can tell us where they go when they get here, where they shop, where they go to entertain themselves. It's unbelievable. The cost is unbelievable. They're still emailing me at least once a week wanting to know if I'd like to go any further with it. And it's, it's just, yeah, it's just something that, it's great information. It's fun information.
A little creepy too.
But it is. You're absolutely right, Chris. The things they can do is, is just weird. You know, I, I simply asked them, I said, can you tell me, can you tell me the businesses around Big Woods Lake and North Cedar? Who, you know, who goes there? How do they benefit from it? Oh my gosh, it's just boom, boom, boom. They just pop that stuff up. So yeah, it's spooky, quite honestly. So those things are out there. For us to do that, we, we have a little idea where people are coming from. I can tell you one thing they told us about Big Woods. I know we get a lot of, of out-of-state tourism, but they were still telling us that seventy percent of the usage of that campground, which I'm sure applies to Blackhawk Park also, and Hickory Hills, and McFarland. We were still in the seventieth percentile of what they call locals or people within a fifty-mile radius of those sites. So it's still lots and lots of Blackhawk County residents using our camping facilities, and we assume everything else that we have, so.
And during the summer, at any of the sites, are there any vacancies typically, or are they generally full?
You know, Big Woods Lake, we can say, is typically, it's usually full. Now, I'm not going to say that on a, on a Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday, you can't get in there and slip a camper in. A Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, if you wait until Thursday, you're probably not going to get anything. Blackhawk Park, as long as we can keep that water out of there, and we've proved this year after year after year, if we can keep that water out of Blackhawk Park, it, it competes with Big Woods, and it has for the last three years. We have not flooded in three years, and the numbers for that park are staggering. Again, didn't think we could ever see anything compete with Big Woods. That one does. And as long as we can keep that out of there, so. The, and really all of our campgrounds are, are going well. Hickory Hills too. I mean, the demand is out there, so, anyway. Any other questions?
These are a hot commodity in the county.
Yeah, yeah, they really are. And they are all over the state. I mean, really, anywhere you go, campsites are, are at a premium, so. Yep. So Michelle, I don't know which screen you want to go to.
Well, I wasn't sure. You brought a presentation, right? Do you want to do it first?
I will do the capital in the end.
Okay.
Think that'd be a good idea.
All right. I can do that.
Yeah, so let's, if we, the operating budget first. Okay. So the operating budget, the revenue really, it's pretty simple. If you, if we cut to the chase and go right down to revenue totals, and you go over to the dollar change amount in the second to the last column to the right, it shows that we're down fifty thousand, four hundred dollars in revenue from the prior year. That really can be encompassed by, now if you move up that line to miscellaneous state reimbursements, and you see that forty-seven thousand dollars, that is a reimbursement that we will get from, from the state with, for the Casey Lake Restractions Engineering. If you remember with the engineering, we paid the money upfront, then we got reimbursed seventy-five percent. Once we went to the construction phase, they pay it upfront, they invoice us, and we pay it. But as long as we've got engineering going on, there will be reimbursement. We add reimbursement in 2024 to the tune of forty-seven thousand dollars, or we will have forty-seven thousand dollars, we're anticipating. For '25, we do have engineering. Sixty-three thousand is what we're looking at right now for 2025. But Michelle has chosen to move that to the capital side, and that's why it's removed there. So that's showing zero there, which shows forty-seven thousand dollars we won't be getting back, although we will. If you take that out of the fifty thousand, four hundred dollars, we're down to about three thousand dollars difference. And that three thousand dollars difference just runs back to, we're, we're getting in it, we get adjustments on, the light shows what's really something that we're trying to pin down. The first year we did that was just amazing, over six hundred cars. Yes, it's dropped off from that. People have things to do now, but we still are finding out that when we can avoid blizzards like we did last year, as you saw in this thing, there was eighteen hundred cars went through there, but that was in fiscal year. Yes, it's dropped off from that, people have things to do now, but we still are finding out that when we can avoid blizzards like we did last year, as you saw in this thing, there was 1,800 cars went through there, but that was in fiscal year, um, '23. We had over 3,000 this year. It's working its way back as long as we can get them in there. But we still don't know that we'll ever see that 6,000 again. So we're readjusting from that. And that's really where it is. Otherwise, our revenue would be right on, right on spot. And then, if you want to go back to how we started this conversation with camping, if you look at the numbers for camping fees, um, in FY '24, we budgeted 31 thou, or 381,000 dollars. We always consider half the season in the fall, half the season in the spring. We're already at, uh, almost $225,000. If we get a decent spring where we can just, so those people wanna camp, and, and they will, as long as there's not snow on the ground. But if we get that opportunity, we're gonna, we're gonna fly over that $381,000. We did it in FY '23, if you see, if you'll look at that, you know, we hit 423,000. But the thing of it is, as Nikki and I go through this and as we try to, you know, estimate what these things are gonna be, um, you know, I've been here a long time, I know what happens. And we talked about three years of dry weather for, um, Blackhawk Park. If that changes and we go under for Memorial Day weekend or a Fourth of July weekend, um, then we're gonna be, we're gonna make those numbers. And realistically, we would, we prefer to give you a number, uh, based on, based on averages. And on the average, we will flood at some point and, and take away some significant revenue. We've, it's been great for three years, I hope we get another one, um, cause it's been fantastic. So...
And I, if you, do you mind if I ask?
Sure, fire it, yep.
I, I also am curious about Hickory Hills with Casey Lake being drained.
Yep.
I'm not sure they'll see the same action they've seen in the past because the, the lake just isn't available.
Now, so, you know, and, and some of the indicators we used for that, um, we reserve some camping sites. Obviously, we have cabins to rent. They're down a little, they're not down a lot, um, for what we're seeing right now. Uh, maybe it's one of those things where this first summer, because we could be down, obviously, two summers. Um, and maybe this first summer, people are like going, eh, I gotta see it to believe it, I don't really know, you know, we're gonna come anyway. There's still plenty to do at Hickory Hills and we've been trying to sing that song, you know, and tell people, you can, there's still so much to do. As a matter of fact, I think it'd be fun to sit in my lawn chair at my camper and watch these guys work. Um, it's amazing to see what they're doing right now because you're seeing something that, that we've never seen before. And, um, and it's gonna be a one-shot deal. Once that water, that lake fills back up barring a catastrophe, you're not gonna see the bottom of that lake again for 70, 75 years, I hope, you know? So, uh, anyway. So the indicators are saying, yeah, we're still gonna come. It remains to be seen.
I think the lake was so bad.
Yep, yep. Exactly.
And when I've gone there when it was bad, I thought, well, that's pretty disgusting. Boys, stay away from that water.
Yeah.
I've had many frustrating frisking trips with my nephews out there.
Mm-hmm. Yep, exactly, yeah, we know. Yep, exactly.
Mike, the bu, go ahead. The bison herd, how many other counties have a bison and elk herd?
Oh, I'm not gonna be able to give you a number, but I can tell you, uh, just off the top of my head. Pot County has one, um, I believe Polk County does, Lynn County does, um, there are several other, Buchanan County does. Um, and I've only got this because I know Al works with all those guys with trading of animals back and forth. And, uh, and it brings, you know, the, the livestock, uh, line item here is down just a little bit, but that fluctuates all the time. Cause we never know how many animals we're gonna move. That depends on age of animals, it depends on genetics. And, um, when it's time to move, sometimes we have to move five to six animals out, um, because of genetics or age. Um, and then sometimes, and, and Al just has made some big moves. And, um, and he's got, we're waiting on a trade with, uh, Pot County. And, um, we've got a, a, a new bison bull coming. And he's an amazing specimen, they haven't moved him yet, but he will be coming that way. And, um, but after that, then we're, we should be set for a while, um, as far as, we won't be moving a lot of animals, um, for, for a little bit. It'll, it'll be a, it'll be smaller numbers anyway, so...
Do, do we ever have calves?
Yes, yep, we do. And that's figured into this. Um, and typically, typically, we have, oh, we could have anywhere from two to five, something like that, um, if everything goes well. And, but, but we normally always have calves. I believe last spring we had two, I believe. We try to get pictures and get those on the website because they're a big attractor of people, they love to see them. They get hidden for a while though, sometimes we don't see them until, um, they're up and running around, so, yep. Any other questions? I don't see a whole lot else on there. Um, as far as changes go, there's some large percentages, but the numbers aren't big. Um, I can, I can refer to the last line of the revenue, the sale of capital assets, um, you know, it shows a 63% increase. At, when we get to the capital, we're gonna talk about our old semi, we, we would like to replace that. Um, we would put that on the, we'll sell that. Um, it's possible we would trade it in, but we've been doing really well on the gov.com sites when we sell things. They seem to bring more money. So we're anticipating that, uh, if, if you approve what we want to do, we would sell that and that's what we think it would bring, um, which is, which is more than what we had last year. So it shows the difference there, but a lot of these things, um, large percentages of increase, but not a big dollar amount, quite honestly, so... Any other questions with the revenue side? The operating side. Again, it's, if you go to the bottom line, the bottom line says that we're actually, uh, going to, our expenses are going to be 6% less. If you really wanna get to the meat and potatoes of that and how we're, how we're going to get there, because there, there are quite a few increases, all those small increases. Um, but if you go to, uh, uh, 670 towards the bottom of the, of page number two, and you look at professional services, you're, we're going, we're showing $72,500 dollar amount change in there, um, from the year prior. Again, that goes back to engineering and it got moved out of that category and into capital. And so it's, that's what's showing that change. And that's what's saying that we're going to have, uh, a little less in expenses than what we had the year before. Otherwise, again, some of these percentages look big, but they're, you know, it's a couple thousand here, a couple thousand there, training right at the top. Um, we're showing a 19% increase in that, um, we're, we're putting another $2,500 in there. The academy, um, is going up. Um, they've, we, we've had a few increases in that, it's not been huge, but it's been a little bit. Um, that category encompasses our training. There've been a lot of opportunities out there for training and we, we really like training. I mean, we've got a lot of new and young people, uh, on our staff and we feel like those things are a really good way to kinda boost them and get them moving. Um, we kinda ran into a wall here, I, I kinda overshot the training a little on, on this year's budget, it looks like. Um, so we adjusted a little bit. Um, there are some things that we'll pull down and watch a little bit closer, but, but there are a lot of opportunities out there. Um, I wish at some point I could pull that, uh, sending a park ranger to the academy, because we've had that in there, I think, for the last five years. But reality says that, um, uh, these guys, uh, they, they will move on you and there's not a lot you can do to, uh, to keep them tied down. And, uh, so we just graduated one in December, um, and, um, we are at full staff right now. I hope we stay that way, but I can't, that, that's, history has shown that it won't stay that way. And we'll be sending somebody again. So I put it in again. I hope we don't have to use it, so... Uh, some of the other items on here. Signs, we, we boosted that a couple of thousand dollars. And it, a lot of our entry signs, a lot of our big signs, um, like at Beaver Valley Wetland, at the Rotary Reserve, at Turkey Ridge area, those are all getting very old, they're all very sun faded, they don't look, makes the area look unkept. And so we, those are things that don't, we don't replace very often. But when we do, they're expensive, they're the bigger signs, they're like a four-by-eight sign or, or something like that. So, so there's a little added cost in something like that, um, and it's a, it's something we don't do very often, but we, but we'll do it. Um, household and institutional, in case you're wondering, those, that's material for our cabins. It would be, uh, TVs, furniture, tables, refrigerators, anything like that. Um, we are in a spot where, especially the cabins at Hickory Hills, they get used so heavily, we really need to revamp that furniture. And we tried to take a look at the type of furniture we'd wanna put in a cabin that's somewhat durable. And, um, that stuff is, is pretty high-priced. As a matter of fact, what was requested to us was a lot more than that. We're going to try to space that out over the next three years. So we doubled what we had in there and we'll get, we'll start with that. And we'll get by fine, um, but, but I think we'll phase it in, I think that's the better way to do it, quite honestly. Recreational crafts and supply, that's just, it's material that we use for our fundraisers, Under the Harvest Moon, Maple Syrup Festival, those kinds of things, um, where, whether we're buying, you know, sausage for Maple Syrup Festival or, or pancake mix or anything like that. And some of our educational programming, they need materials for things like that. Um, so that's down a little bit, um, but it's adjustments for, uh, we're, we're figuring out these fundraisers, uh, we're getting them a little tighter as far as expenses go. And, um, and that shows that we're down just a little bit. Again, I mentioned, uh, professional services, that was a big one and it was just moving, it was just simply moving that money to the capital, the engineering, the capital. Our, uh, line on, on page three, the line 698, the, the, that's basically the mechanics line for parts for, for his vehicles and that he's fixing and things like that. Parts are going up, um, it seems like we've had, we've struggled with keeping that line in there. So we put another thousand in there and hopefully it will, it'll be able to hold on and, and stay that way. A larger item in our expenses then, if you look at, uh, 1034, that's miscellaneous materials, uh, repair materials and labor. That's basically construction material. It's wood, screws, hinges, doors, windows, anything that, like that, that we need for our facilities. Um, we typically would put that at, at $30,000. For FY '24, it's at 80 and it's because we're doing $50,000 worth of, uh, resurfacing of our asphalt road in Blackhawk Park. And, um, that's where Michelle preferred that that go. And so that's why there was that boost, we, we didn't actually raise that line item. And then for FY '25, um, same situation, we put our 30 in there for our, our building materials, uh, so to speak. And then those building materials were actually broken out, uh, and we moved those, some of those got moved around into this category. And, uh, things that I, that would've normally been in capital, but, uh, the Hickory Hills group camp, we're going to put new electric in that group camp. That was $20,000. The, uh, roof replacement at Blackhawk Park, which you're gonna see some photos of that here in just a minute, that was another 20,000. And the upper deck at the Rotary Reserve, and that's just the decking material, that was 25,000. That got, that was moved into, into this also. And so that's what moved that up, um, and, and has that at $95,000. And then utilities, I'll, I'll bring that up, um, you know, it's up almost 10%. I think everybody understands the fact, I, I know personally, everybody's utility bills are going up. And, um, and we're no exception and when those campgrounds are full, we use a lot of electricity. And, um, but rates are going up. We also kinda got a, a swat in the back of the head from CFU with Big Woods Lake Campground. Uh, we found out that they are now charging a minimum fee for their electric meters. There are two meters in that campground, okay? They explained to us that they no longer have what they used to call, I guess, a government, a governmental category. Um, now, they've just spread that out. So this went to the schools, this went to, to every governmental agency that, that didn't have this before. The problem is, they operate 12 years, or 12 months out of the year. They don't ever see that. When we shut down Big Woods Lake, um, we don't have any usage there. But now, we're going to be paying a thousand dollars for those two meters. Um, and it will be, we close those campgrounds in December. We typically will do $500 worth of electrical business in November, as long as the weather doesn't get too bad, so we don't even have to count that. But December, January, February, March, maybe even April, we have nobody in there and we've just had our utility bill boosted by like $4,000. We talked to them, um, there isn't anything we can do other than pay it. So, um, that added to this too, and it was kind of a, kind of a punch in the stomach for us, but it is what it is and that's doing business, so... Any questions about the operating?
Uh, maybe a, a quick question back on the, on the revenue side.
Sure.
How long have cabin fees, have they been increased over the last couple of years?
We haven't increased anything over the last couple of years. Nikki, do you actually remember the last time, cause we, we did cabins, even camping fees? Yeah, yeah, that's, that's six or seven years. We do discuss that every year, we discuss that with our board. We try to, uh, reach out and find out what those around us are charging, uh, state parks, Lynn County, uh, everybody around us. There are a couple that have moved above us with their cabin rental fees, with their camping fees. We, we kinda like, it's nice to be the lower guy, you know? But I think the time's coming when those fees are probably going to get raised a little bit.
Well, and just looking at, if we're gonna have some cabins that need some, some improvements, that would seem like a reasonable time.
Yep. Yep, absolutely. Yep. And again, we, uh, when we start to formulate this budget and develop this budget, that conversation comes up. And, uh, we, we bypassed it again for this budget, but we sort of hung a little asterisk on it and said, next year, I think we really seriously need to be looking at, at, at everything that we ran out, probably getting boosted a little, so...
And then, like, as you said, you're trying to tie this into phasing in furniture and that type of thing too, so looking at seeing what that would be.
And fees are, fees are pretty much flat. I mean, they, they don't adjust per park.
No.
No, 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 they're the same everywhere. Yep, our full-season cabins are the same, our, our, uh, three-season cabins are all the same, yep.
You have a dollar amount, or you know what you're looking at for the furniture too, or kinda to anticipate just mentally as far as going forward with it, what that would mean to you? Or is it just something you wanna explore that for the furniture?
You know, um, from our, our unit ranger kinda laid out that to do all those cabins, he would need 10, $12,000 to do what he wanted, to do with the furniture that he wanted. Now, uh, Nikki and I did do a little exploring too. I think we found comparable, uh, furniture, uh, that I think would, he would compromise with. We thought it was cheaper. Well, we know it was cheaper, um, we, we think it will be as durable. And so, we've really gotta research that stuff. I just felt like his whole ask was, was a lot. Um, some of that stuff, yes, it definitely needs to be replaced, I think some of it's got a little bit of life yet. And, um, it was just one of those things where it was kinda my decision that I didn't wanna just throw it all out the window. And I, I think it's, I think some of it's okay for right now, so... But we'll feel our way through that. I don't know exactly the route we're gonna go with that furniture, but we'll, we'll feel our way through it, so... Okay, we can go back to this at any point if you'd like to.
Say cabins, you can get those ugly couches everybody's grandma had in the eighties with the wagon wheel on it.
Yeah, yeah. Problem with nice comfy furniture and those things is as soon as they spill beer on them, then it's like, ugh. And so we've gotta get that stuff that you can, you know, you can wipe down and, cause they, it just gets stuff spilled all over it, quite honestly, so...
Do you anticipate CFU increasing those rates at all? Did they say anything about that in the future? I mean, that was kinda surprising to us.
The, the minimal fees?
Yep.
Well, I hope not, cause that was quite a shock to us, you know, one fell swoop, that $500. And I know they sat there and thought, well, nobody's gonna say anything about it because again, the, the schools and things like that, they, they use it, they, they never see it, cause they have a $500 bill. But for us, yeah, it was big and they, there wasn't a whole lot of empathy there. I don't know. Well, but I hope they don't. Um, you know, there's discussion with the city that we may, that we're, we're looking into expanding that, uh, that campground. And my fear is, is that that will take another meter and then we'll be at $1,500. So that's a conversation that we're gonna have to have with the city too. It's like, well, maybe, maybe at this point, folks, we need to, we need a little help here or something. Cause it just, wow, it seems like a big hit. You know, if you get to that point for four months, maybe even five months out of the year, when you don't get any camping in there, that's a lot of, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Mike, this is Tom. Um, did you say that was a utility tax?
Uh, no, it's, it's not a tax, it's just a, it's a, a minimal fee that they put on all their meters, Tom, their electric meters. And there are two of them in, uh, Big Woods Lake, there are two separate meters. And so, for every meter they've got, they have a $500 minimum. If you, as long as your utility bill's $600, I guess you don't notice, you just gotta pay it anyway. But again, when, when our utility bill amounts to zero, when we have no camp, campers in there, and we based our budget on zero for three months, and then all of a sudden, it's a thousand dollars, it's, it's a, it's noticeable.
Create a bread of revenue generation.
Yeah, and we may be the only people that complain about that, cause everybody else, that it probably, that they gave that notice, they go, well, we spend it anyway, so it doesn't matter. But we don't, so...
Mandated. Another mandate. Thanks. Thanks.
Of course.
All right. Do you want to talk about your GIS position going down a 10th?
Yeah.
You have good news there.
Yeah, exactly. With FTEs, we didn't add anything this year, but we did actually go down just a little bit. You know, Engineers Office and Conservation share the GIS position, and incredibly helpful to us. We started that out at a 50/50 split, because first of all, it was very easy that way to divide that up. We really didn't know what that position was going to do for us. We had a lot of ideas, some of them pan out, some of them don't. But I think after a year of this, or a little over a year of this, more time is spent with Engineers Office than it was with Conservation. So Kathy and I had that conversation, and we felt like maybe it was better to bring it down to a 60/40 split. That could move, and that's the wonderful thing about this, it's, there's flexibility there. If we get into something that, you know, we, something's changed, and we can use Derek for those things, you know, we may use more of his time. But it was, you know, when it all came out in the wash, and you looked at the hours and where they were spent, there was more spent, quite a bit more spent in secondary roads than there was in Conservation. Now, we are finding things all the time, and that's great. We're learning what that position will do for us as we move forward, and there's more and more things that we're finding that he can do for us, so. Then may move again, but right now, that looks like the better way to do it, so.
I tried to forget about REAP.
Yeah, REAP and the Conservation Trust. Really, it's donated money. There's no other way to look at it. It's donated money. We take a wild guess what will be donated to us. We're very, very fortunate that we do receive a lot of donations, and then as far as the expense side of that goes, and how we try to figure out what we're going to spend, we just try to look into that crystal ball, and we say, and I'll just use the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. A couple of years ago, we got a significant donation for the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. We put it into REAP, and it's been sitting there to the tune of about $115,000. Finally, the day's coming, or this budget's coming, where we will use that money. We will pull that out of that REAP account and use that for the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, which it was intended for, when we get to Division Two, and we're just about ready to go out for bid for Division Two. And that's going to be three bridges and some overlaying of the surface. You know, we're doing Division One right now, and that's the hard surfacing of the part that isn't, but Division Two is just about ready to start. So we'll start pulling that money out of there. But again, it's a guess, and we usually hit it pretty well, and then we just need to say, what do you think we're going to pull out of that in FY25? Will it be $250,000 that we'll pull out of that REAP account? And you'll see, and those numbers reflect that, and they reflect the fact, the big numbers reflect the fact that a lot of that REAP account is going into that trail, because donations were made earmarked for it, and now it's time. So that's kind of REAP and Conservation Trust.
All right. Do you want to switch to your own presentation now on the CIP?
Yeah.
Okay, I will. Stop sharing.
Where's the "from the beginning"? Oh, there we go. From the beginning, okay. Okay. Here comes the capital. Our capital really revolves around three large projects, and some of them we can move around a little bit, some of them we can't. First of all, and we'll get to these individually, but just the three big projects, Casey Lake renovation, we've got $250,000 in there for that. That's a freight train moving forward, and we aren't going to stop that, and they're getting that one done. The next big one is final engineering design and construction of the erosion control project in the state preserve at Hartman Reserve Nature Center. I've got, I'll talk about that in detail, but as you can see, that's a very large number. $450,000 for construction, $70,500 for engineering yet that needs to be done. So that's really big. The other really big capital project, and it has to do again with infrastructure, is the Rotary Reserve. The Rotary Reserve, it's going to be 30 years old in June, and we're looking at siding and windows for that. It makes sense to do them at the same time, but we're looking at about $230,000 for that. So those three projects are, have really driven that capital to the amount that it is. So with that being said, I pretty much covered that first, the first slide, but Beaver Valley Wetland, the viewing pier's in there, and if you've ever been out to Beaver Valley Wetland and walked the little trail to the old one, it was very popular, used by birders of many kinds, and people that just wanted to get out and look around, and during spring migration, it's incredible what that, what goes on at that wetland. Fun to watch, but that viewing pier was in bad, bad shape. It had to be taken down for safety reasons. It was built a long time ago. I actually helped build that. That's how we did everything, but its time had, its time had come and it's gone. I wouldn't rebuild another one. It needs to be done with engineering and design and all those kinds of things. We have a new spot for that, and we would like to replace that, and we've got those numbers coming up on there. I talked about most of the rest of that. The truck shed, even though that's not in the capital now, it's in operating, I do have a slide of that, and then we'll talk about the administrative office. So Casey Lake, once again, that's one of the big three, $250,000. That's moving forward. That's all for construction, and we should be, should be in good shape with that. We shouldn't have any big surprises. We hope we don't have any big surprises, and we'll see how that all turns out. Erosion control at Hartman Reserve Nature Center. You know, unfortunately, this has been a problem for a long time. I know Vern attempted to tackle this back in 2007, 2008. We found history of that and what they tried to do, and they really couldn't come up with funding for it. This is the state preserve portion of Hartman Reserve. We are tasked with management of that and taking care of it. The photos that you see is the extensive erosion that you're seeing at the bottom of those ravines. They weren't able to do anything in 2008, another, what, 10, 18 years has gone by. It's only gotten worse. Some of the things that you see outside of these photos, you know, trees are eroding off the sides, and they're falling into the ravines. We have some walk bridges in there, some, the footings are starting, you know, they're scouring out under the footings. We're going to be dealing with those at some point too. So we went back, we took a look at this, and we just decided that we were, you know, we need to try to take a shot at this. The problem we've got with almost anything we bring to you guys with these capital projects, whether it's the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, there's normally a granting source that we can go, and we chase those, and you guys know that. We chase anything and everything that we can. This one, this is a tough one. We did apply for REAP last year. I thought it was a wonderful REAP grant. It's everything REAP is about. REAP is not about, totally about land acquisition. REAP is about enhancing and protecting what we already have. The problem we've got is, is the fact that our REAP funds just seem to go to land acquisition almost 100% over the last, I've lost track of the years. I attend those meetings. We had a grant in this cycle, and so we sat and watched, and sure, there was almost $5 million worth of asks for land, and it ate up, it ate up the REAP funds in the first three. We ended up finishing, I think, ninth out of 12 or something like that. We could go after it again, and we might, we've discussed that. I don't know if it's going to do any good, but it doesn't hurt to, you know, throw it at it again. Other than that, it's hard to find granting sources for something like this. I can get on my political soapbox and talk about I-Will and the three eighths of a cent that that penny would bring. It would be pools of money for us that we've never imagined before, and it's so sad that we don't have those pools of money. But one of the things that would be big for this is water quality. It fits right into that, and that pie wedge, if you've seen that for I-Will and that three eighths of a cent, that's, there's a lot of money dedicated to water quality. Enough to the point where, yes, there'd be a lot of applications, but you just have a better chance to get something out of that deal. Maybe that miracle will happen this legislative session, but I'm not holding my breath on that. So we've put it in front of you, it's something you'll have to consider. We certainly understand it's big. We'll continue to chase it. We'll get it done at some point, but we kind of need to start working on that now, and actually, we've been working on it for about a year. We were hoping we could walk in here and tell you that we had a $300 REAP grant for it, but we didn't. And we were, $300,000, I'm sorry. We didn't have that, so. But we'll keep looking.
What kind of stuff really would they actually come in and do for the erosion control?
Yeah, what they'll do, and we've got just some preliminary designs, but what they'll do is they'll go to the bottom of those ravines, and for lack of better terms, they will go along there every so often and build, we can call them a dam system, we can call them a salmon ladder, whatever you want to call it, and they'll use nothing but natural material. There will be no riprap in there, there won't be, you know, pilings driven and things like that, because of the sensitivity of the area. We have already grabbed hold of fieldstone. We reached out to local area farmers, you see lots of piles of fieldstone laying in their fields. We reached out via social media and asked if anyone would be willing to donate their piles of fieldstone to this project. It didn't take very long. All we had to do was go get it and haul it. We have all the fieldstone ready to go, but there will be a series of little dams, so the water will come down those hills, they'll catch in those pools, and those pools will hold them until obviously it overflows. And when it, while it's held in there, the sediment drops out. The cutting stops, the sediment gets laid back down in again, and then it goes to the next pool, and it gets held up, and so it's going to be a series of pools all the way down through there. They will use natural materials such as the logs that are laying down there. They'll actually utilize those to help with those pools, to create those little pools. From an environmental education standpoint, can you imagine what those are going to, the life those are going to have them through the summertime? They're going to be teeming with life to take kids down and sort through frogs, you name it, they're going to be in there. And then also vegetation. There will be planting of certain vegetation along those steep banks. There will be some opening of the canopy so that we can get more sunlight in there to increase or enhance vegetation, because it's lacking in there. We've got a heavy canopy growth in there, lots of shade, not a lot of the vegetation that we need to hold those banks. So, yeah, there's quite an extensive system being engineered to hold that and stop that erosion, but it's really neat how they put that all together. AECOM's working on that for us, and that 70,000 plus that's in there is, would be the final engineering and design that they'll be doing for that project.
How visible would the area be from like one of the staircases or something? Like, could you be able to, how accessible would it be to explore the area, like, after it's completed?
Right now, we have steps and trails and bridges right to the source. Literally right to the source. A lot of that too, this is incorporated in all this. A lot of the steps, the bridges, those are going to be replaced along with this, because they've deteriorated quite badly. But no, we put them right down in the bottom of those things.
So the steps are a part of the project too? Okay, good.
Yep, yep.
And did you say, Mike, it would be about $300,000?
Actually, we're looking at about $450,000.
$450,000 for that.
Yep, our REAP grant, I think, was a little over $300,000 what we were asking for. We didn't ask for 100%.
Okay, that was where the $300,000 came from, that's why I thought it was the higher.
Yeah, we were trying to sweeten that grant a little with some, you know, some other funding and things like that, matching funds, that kind of stuff, so. That's what we were looking for. But yeah, about $450,000 is what we're looking at for construction. We don't have those final numbers yet, but we anticipate it being that. And I should back up. One of the other things that's critical with this is timing, and again, can we get around it? Sure, we have to. If we have to, we have to. The timing is, we've met with River Hill School twice about this. We need access through them to get the equipment down in the bottom of those ravines. That's the best way to get that equipment down in there. They are in the process, they have a new parking lot coming. They're designing it as we speak, and then they have a date when they're going to go ahead and build it. We would like to have this construction done next winter, because it would be less impact to the area, obviously if you're on frozen ground, and there's nothing that they can't do in the wintertime. So we'd like to do that work in the wintertime. If we got it done in the wintertime, their projections are for their new parking lot to be done the following spring. So anything that we might harm to their parking lot with equipment, we'd be out of their way already. So timing's a little bit critical there too, but then again, there's, you always find ways if you have to, to get around those things, so. But just throwing that out there.
And, I mean, it's a problem, we tried to address for, you know, 20 some years now. If it keeps going, it's just, it'll become more costly in the future though too.
Yep.
If we don't stop the erosion now.
Yep. And another part of the timing part of this is, City Cedar Falls is developing roadways through there with storm, new stormwater systems and all those kinds of things. Those roads, you know, are very old and decrepit in there. So that's kind of what got us involved in this, is because we knew the city was coming through there with these new roads, and we thought, now's the time to get with them, and let's work on this together and find out the best solution for this. So that's why we kind of jumped on that. AECOM's doing that work, and that's why we kind of wanted to talk with them. So they're doing both parts of this, and I think we're getting the best for our money with having them on board to do this, so. The roadway's a part of it too. Moved on to the viewing pier at Beaver Valley Wetland. This thing, what you're looking at is, yeah, this isn't what we're building, but we wanted to utilize that to show you the grate system that we would like on the ramp and the viewing platform that we would have out there. It's a steel grate system as opposed to a wooden floor or a concrete floor. Beaver Valley Wetland in 2008 and in 2016, the water did come up over that old pier. It was all wood, it kind of hydrojacked it in different ways and different things like that. This would allow the water to go up and go back down again. It allows rain to go through it, it allows snow and ice to go through it. We've seen several examples of these things out there, and they're really, really pretty cool. They work really, really well, especially outdoors like that, and so we would like to have that system in place, and that's kind of what we're talking to AECOM about. And this is going to be a very simple, very simple structure. We think that it can be, look at my numbers to make sure, we were talking about construction being about $105,000, and then we've got some engineering that still needs to be finished up at about $20,000. And so, yeah, this isn't a really fancy thing, it doesn't need to be. Where we're placing it, they're going to have a much better view of that wetland, and I actually met with Prairie Rapids Ottoman Society, and I took them out to the site, and we chatted about it, and told them, you know, what we were doing, and what, how we would have to make this trail out here and things like that. They spend a lot of time out there, and they were just all in, they were thrilled with it. They loved the location, they loved everything about it, and just, they gave us their support, and I said, and maybe you can give us some support financially. So that's still a possibility too, so. We're working on that, so.
Will it be similar in structure wise to the one that's out at Big Woods, just like that dock? Like, as far as like the?
It could be. Basically, what we're looking at is, we're looking at a straight handicapped accessible ramp, obviously with grade being the biggest issue. And then the platform will be a 12-foot by 14-foot platform, will probably have some type of bench seating along there so that you could sit down, but you'll literally be able to stand there and look out onto that wetland. There will be railings there, they can put viewing scopes, spotting scopes up on those things. It'll be extremely simple, so.
I remember the old, I liked the old pier, so I like, it'd be nice to have something there again.
Yeah, we knew when it came down, there would be people going, now what are you going to do? So we're trying to get on that before it gets too far. The Rotary siding and windows. Again, the Rotary had its first rental in June of 1994, so when we hit June this year, we're going to be 30 years old. There have been a lot of people go through that building and use that building. It's probably one of the more consistent revenue sources that we have. I mean, year after year, it brings in about the same amount. We still keep getting great business, you know, Cedar You know, Cedar Falls has built venues, several new venues, there's one up by Waverly, but we still seem to be in the ballgame, and people like what we have to offer. The downside to it is, with the siding, and you've got some pictures there, that was cedar siding. And back when we built that, I remember how exciting that was because the cedar siding was just a hot thing back in the early 90s. It was, it, it looked neat, it gave it that outdoors rustic look, and, but to keep it looking good was a lot of work. We used a product called Sickens or Cetol, they've changed the name a little bit, but it's, it's a stain, for lack of better terms. It's almost a stain and a, and a varnish together. But the problem with it is, it's very susceptible to the sun, it likes to blister, as you can see on there. And literally when we put that on there, we knew that every two years, three years at the most, we had to go recoat that thing. And it's not a material that you can spray, it's a very oily, thick substance, you can't roll it on, you have to put it on with a brush. That building is huge, and to try to do that, and we, we did pretty good for a lot of years. We religiously covered it every two years, but it ate up a lot of summer in, in order to do it. We finally got to the point where it was hard to keep up with, we kind of put it on, we thought, well, how about if we split it a third, a third, a third, and do it every, you know, everything gets covered in three years. It probably did as good a job as trying to get it done, all of it done every two years. But the problem we've got is, that stuff, even the, the material's 30 years old, we can no longer match that color. We have worked with that company, we have tried so hard, and we go, it doesn't match, there's just, we cannot match it. And so, every time we recoat it, we can't get that dark color back in there. Some of the siding is now, you know, it's, it's had damage from insects or, woodpeckers love it for whatever reason, but we've had to remove some of it, and when we try to replace it, you'll see what happens, we get these, we, we can't match the color anymore. And so, it's starting to look like a building that, that's, it's just all patched together is what it looks like. And again, it's a, it's a source of, it's normally weddings and wedding receptions and things like that. People, they like that in their pictures, they like it in their background, and that's kind of some of what they're looking at now. So, like it or not, at some point, this was all going to have to be changed. We are actually looking at a siding, it's a, it's a cement finished siding that, it's got a plywood backing, it's, it's, it's a really thick, heavy stuff. We never have to stain it, paint it, anything, once it goes on there. It's got a, it's got a backing on there that's, that's bug proof every time it lays in there, it's got a little lip on there that, that keeps those bugs out of there. Everybody knows that those box elder bugs and Japanese beetles or whatever those things are that, that show up every fall. But, so, we've got a material that we would like to use, and we've looked into the cost, it's a little more expensive, but it's, it's got an amazing warranty on it, it's got an amazing amount of years of life to it. So, it would look, it would be the color that we have right now, just, just different siding. The windows, the problem we have with the windows is, again, they're 30 years old, they're double pane windows, when you get, when summer rolls around and it's hot outside and humid, and we've got the air conditioners running in, we get these, you know, water inside of them. And so, we get these holograms in there, and people can't see out there, and that view is pretty important, and it's just, first it was one window, and, and it was two, and, and, and pretty quick you've got them all, and they just look like we didn't clean them, is what it looks like. So, again, that's why the time has come, it's, something's going to have to be done with it. We will be doing the, the Lakeview Lodge, and if you look at the five-year plan, you'll see the Lakeview Lodge is on there for next year. We want to do our cabins with this same product, we, we would like to do everything that we have siding on with the same product. And, and so, we've got the cabins kind of scheduled too in our, in our five-year plan as we move down through there. So, yeah, it's, it's a big cost. I think it would, would cover a lot of years again, but, but the building is very popular. This again was, was moved to operating, but this is out of Black Hawk Park, and this is the old storage area. It used to be our shop, it used to be our woodworking shop, our mechanic shop, all that kind of stuff before the 2008 flood. We did remove the office off the front of that after the '08 flood, but there's nothing in that, there's no heat in that building anymore, there's electricity for lights and things like that, but it's cold storage. Extremely important. It gets a lot of our equipment underneath and out of the sun and out of the snow and rain and all that kind of stuff. So, there was talk about taking that down. I argued about that when I was a unit ranger vehemently because replacing it is going to be, there's a lot of cost involved. Structurally, for the most part, that building is very solid. It's just the roof, it was a flat roof, we had trouble with it many, many years ago, and we just kept patching it. It's just to the point where that's not doable anymore. So, we're looking at putting just a slight pitch on it over the top to try to get that water off that roof faster, and, and we're looking at about, we, we had it, we had some contractors look at it, and they can do it for about $20,000, so. But that structure needs to stay there, it's important for our equipment and everything Sidewalks, this is the administrative, the administrative building at 1346 West Airline Highway. These sidewalks all the way around the building, if you come out and take a look at them, they've literally just tipped down. I don't know why, but they've, they've tipped down. And quite honestly, when we took, when we got into this building in 2009, they were already showing this, they've gotten worse over the years. We've, so as they tip down, they pulled away from the sides of the building, and they've just opened up big gaps where rainwater, snow melt, ice, everything goes down in there. We've run filler in there, you know, the, the filler stuff, we've used liquid caulk in there, we've tried to fill them with things, it just seems to keep separating. So, we need to do something with those sidewalks. We're going to have to knock those out, they're going to have to be repoured and leveled back up again. We don't necessarily get pools of water on the floor downstairs, but we get a lot of moisture from that because it's just right outside the walls, and so, we battle that in the summertime. But just for the, the well-being of the building, it's something that we need to look at. I think we had that, that was like $75,000, something like that, so, for those sidewalks. To our equipment capital, it's really pretty basic. We, we typically try to rotate a vehicle out each year, we try to rotate a mower out each year, you'll see those on there. HVAC systems in the park rangers' houses, they are all sort of at the same age, so we're kind of rotating some of those out. We actually have two in this fiscal year that we rotated out, we would like to rotate another one out, that usually runs about $10,000 to get that done. And then I think we would only have one more park ranger house to do, and then we would have new HVAC systems in all of those. The snowplow for the truck is just, that's a pickup truck, snowplow, $10,000 for, for that. The, a car trailer, we, we move mowers around all over this county. We go all the way to Sugo Cove Park, we have, we have them everywhere. Those trailers do wear out, we're able to put a couple of mowers on them, and so, it's convenient to get two people over there. We're just looking at replacing one of those. We've got a herbicide spray unit, more than anything else, we are starting to get so many acres of pollinator out there and prairie, this is, this is as much a firefighting piece of equipment as anything else. We have one of these units, and we use it when we burn prairies, and they are very, very effective. And we felt like having a second one. Yes, it can spray herbicide too, but it's, we've recognized the fact that it, it's a very, very useful firefighting tool when we burn prairies. So, we've got that on there. And then the semi tractor, there's the pictures of that old girl, 1987 model, and the trailer, the trailer was, we had before we even had that. The problem we've got with it is, again, over all the years, it, it just doesn't have much power anymore. When we put our big end loader on there to take it to the south unit or anything like that, it just doesn't have power. And it's fading in about every phase of the game. So, we would be looking at something similar to this, although with a lot of miles on it. We don't want anything new. I, I think we can get something for 50, $60,000. Yes, there may be 300, 400,000 miles on those units, but as we know, they will hold up. On a typical year, we might put 1,000 miles on it, maybe a little bit more, running back and forth and around in the county. Something like that should last us a long time. We do have the trailer, we're not concerned about, the trailer's going to go too, it is just completely worn out. We've replaced everything on it several times, it's worn out. We already have a trailer, we bought one about, oh, about four years ago, five years ago. And this, we needed it because the new end loader we bought was too tall for DOT specs, it wouldn't fit on the trailer that you're looking at, so we bought a low boy trailer, it's a very nice trailer. And this semi unit that we'd be buying would just hook right onto that, and we'd be fine. So, we've already got a trailer. We just, but this, this probably needs to go, so. Questions?
Any questions, Board? I don't think I have anymore.
You've done a great job at overview of it all, so thank you.
Maybe a, a quick question on the Casey Lake restoration. I know we got a decent number of grants for that, just trying to get a feel for those dollars as they sit, and it's a good, good little chunk there.
Yep. One of the things, one of the things we're looking at, you know, there's a chance not all that $250,000 would need to be spent, but we, we need to be prepared just in case. There, with projects that size, there can always be change orders. We do have a $200,000 grant from Gaming. One of the things we're working on right now is whether we are going to have the ability to spend all that $200,000 because the bid came in much lower than what we thought. That request for that grant was on a percentage basis, and we're working with them right now. So, we may not get all that $200,000 just based on a percentage of what we asked for. That's where this is kind of going to be a catchnet and hopefully get us through to the end, and we, you know, if we may get through with no surprises, I'd be surprised. So, I don't know any other way to put it. Seems like you can't do one of these things without, all of a sudden, there, here comes a change order, and you're going, what? But anyway.
Okay, thanks. Hey, thank you, Mike.
Thank you guys very much.
Thanks. Great presentation. You hit the share. I guess, yeah, you're doing this next. You know what to do.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, I'm going to have to take it back.
I like his mission statement.
I know. I wanted to rewrite everything because he did a great job with finding words that cover a lot of ground.
Whether he may not be my smartest, that's a whole other idea.
Me too. But I said, it looks like she's got the corrupted files out of there, finally, she was having problems, you know, always.
Right.
She said, they found some corrupted files. I said, wow. That was bothering me.
Collins Park or whatever. Man, we were looking at that, we were driving, it was crazy.
Al, are you going to have the fancy, I was going to say fancy work for us?
I have no. He showed me up with that PowerPoint, I've got nothing.
He did, he did, he's just loving it. Yeah.
It's interesting.
It looks really good.
Yeah, but it does. I'm seeing those pictures. Yours is all about the stuff that makes it work.
Yeah, it's interesting.
But I still have to, I still have to be happy to see where it's getting used simply because that's, that was a block and a half walk from my house.
Amazing. You were a user.
Yes.
I guess we were on official recess.
That's what they called it on the football game Sunday.
Should I rip my shirt off and go out in the crowd?
Yeah, I think so.
All right.
Took me a second there.
All right, Al, I think everybody's back now.
All right. Good morning, Board. Al, you IT Director. I would like to start by just reading our department's mission statements, so it's, securely meeting the technical needs of the county through forward thinking, learning, and innovation. This is something we adjusted about a year ago. The previous mission statement was pretty long, and I wanted something concise and, and more relevant to today's standards, so this is what we came up with, and it works really well for our department. I would just like to start off by saying that I have the pleasure of working with some awesome IT professionals. We are a very passionate group of people, and we love to support the county and the employees and all the citizens. So, I guess, well, let's get started here. Michelle, can we flip to, we want to start with operating? Okay. All right. So, for revenue, we are not known for our huge amounts of revenue, we just have some contributions from other departments for things such as like licensing and things like that. We do have an agreement with the two abstract companies, so they have direct access to our tax, tax software, and they pay a monthly amount for that. So, that agreement was established before my arrival. So, we'll skip over the, I guess, do we want to start with, with the salaries or just go straight to the operating?
Wherever you want.
We'll go straight to the operating first, and then, and then, and then we'll come back to the salaries, so. So, what we've done this year, so overall, the, the operation budget has gone up, and you'll see that it is a percentage of 19%, 19.55%. Some of the, what we've done is we've kind of reclassified some of the, the items into different categories. Overall, the increase is due to additional support with the sheriff's office. So, about six months ago, we took over support for the sheriff's office. We've, it's been great learning the, the department and working with their staff. I, I will tell you, it has been a lot to learn. There's so much about compliance that I never knew about, particularly with CGIS, and there was a lot of work to be done to get them up to speed, but I'm, and we're still working on getting there, and I'm, I'm pleased with the progress, but we've got a lot more to go. One of the things that we're doing now is taking over for all their equipment replacement and Microsoft 365. So, if you remember, we, we kind of did an emergency migration of their email, that, that went to the cloud, that consisted of adding 140-plus Microsoft 365 licenses. Sheriff Thompson was nice to cover the, the initial cost of that for the difference from what we pay for the county and what they needed. Moving forward, we will take all the licenses under our department. On top of that, Microsoft has hiked up the price 10% because they are, they're Microsoft. So, that predict, so that really, we have now moved that, it used to be listed in account 442 for maintenance agreements, we've now moved everything over to software, which is 553. That is a better place for that to, to be placed, particularly from audit standpoint, it is technically software, so it's, it makes sense. So, that is, that is the largest increase is anticipating, is, is the additional licenses coming back to us during the renewal and anticipating that 10% cost. In addition, we also added 18-plus licenses for the engineers because they have out, they have out shop employees. With the pending new time, time sheet software that we will be using, it is based on your county email, so we had to get a cheaper license that just accommodates their, their email for all those out shop employees. So, that's an additional cost. In addition to some of the other costs, we have, there is, I will talk about that later in my capital plan, but there is an additional item that, that will increase the operating cost, but we'll cover that later. So, in terms of taking over for the infrastructure and the equipment for the sheriff's department, that includes servers, computers, printers, items like that. We've done a lot of wiring and assisting with some of the, the wiring for the renovation. We've also deployed a lot of wireless access points over there that they didn't previously have, so that adds to the cost. In addition, we have, we will see an increase in some professional services. This will affect account 670, so all the, all the products that all the, all the products that we run that make the county go, go is made by Tyler. They, they provide New World, they provide ENCODE, which is a tax service, E-Suite, a lot of the components. Those are ran on four servers. Those four servers need to be migrated to a new, new version. That is something that I am not comfortable for, with our department doing internally, so that's something I'd like to have professional services done. That is, that makes the county run, and I don't want to be that guy to accidentally mess something up, and then we can't do simple things like payroll for, for a while. So that, that is something that we are including in there. That, I have a breakdown of what that may cost. I think we are tentatively budgeting an estimate of $15,000 for those professional services that migrate the servers. So those current servers run Server 2016. That is going end-of-life here shortly, and we wanna just extend it to the next version, so. In addition, we also have a project for professional services to migrate DocuWare for the Treasury. That's where they, they have all of their scanned documents, other forms, same, same situation like Tyler. We're upgrading the server version to the latest version, and we would prefer to have them do it for us. Yep. And then, the other, I would say, the other thing that adds to the, the bump in operating cost is the incremental increase of everything. So everything is getting more and more expensive. As an example, for Tyler, just for New World alone, it has increased anywhere from 6,000 to 7,000 each year. I think this last year only was about 5,000, but it's, it's an expectation for when you have services like this, anywhere from 5% to 10% increase is, is what you can anticipate for these services. Then, we did receive a department vehicle from, that was donated from the Sheriff's, so in here, I'm just including the line item for just the maintenance and the field, and I think that consists of a small amount of 4,000. Okay. I think that covers main parts of the operating budget. Do you have any questions for me?
Are those, are those the majority of adjustments you anticipate? Just thinking through for next year's budget, some of those pretty hefty flips and adjustments, that'll all get cleaned out.
Yes. I, it's much easier for me now that we have to do the software as a subscription. There's just a lot of analysis to do with that, and so I'm trying to get that captured in the same account instead of several places. So, Al, Al's spent some long hours with me sorting out. We have a very detailed list of what's going where now, but it'll be easier going forward.
Yep, it made sense. Any, everything that was in that account number, which was the 552, that is, I'm sorry, 42, sorry. That is now simply maintenance renewals. So like, a server needs a warranty, that's, that's what those are gonna be for. Things like Tyler, which is a software as a service, Microsoft 365, those are now formally going to software. It makes sense.
I think it goes down in the record books for having a percentage of an increase of that size.
Congratulations, Al.
It is deceiving. It does look deceiving, but it's just the shoveling.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't mean to scare you. All right. So we'll move on to salaries and FTEs. So one of the highlights is a, so at, at the, at the Sheriff's, there was a staff member that was a network administrator. He retired about six months ago. That position has remained vacant, and I would like to kind of bring that over to our department now and reclassify it. It, so it was a network administrator. We are reclassifying the position to a system administrator. It's a, it's, it better adheres to what they actually do, 'cause a lot of the job requirements, such as servers and whatnot, not necessarily just networks. So kind of a jack-of-all-trades position. So that is a position we'd like to bring over. I've worked with Amanda to update the system administrator job description. That is a new job to the county, but it's actually a very standard, common position in the industry. And, and the administrator part, don't look at that as like, say, manager. It's, it's just the title of, of the job. There is no supervision of this position. So, so the, the ask is to bring that position that has been vacant over to our, our department, and then we can fill that role, and then kind of help us do things quicker.
I was assuming that helps with recruitment?
Huh?
Recruitment as well, in hiring that position, having it be, you said it's a pretty standard?
Correct, yep. It, it is, yep. Yep. I, I actually, if, if this is approved, I do anticipate a pretty big turnout for applicants. The job market kind of goes up and down, but sysadmin is a pretty popular position. Yep.
So that particular position, however, was paid differently at the Sheriff's Office?
Correct.
So that would be totally new position for us going forward?
And we'll talk about this more with the Sheriff's Budget. We had, that position had been being paid out of the 60% of the 60-40 fund, the courthouse security. But if you remember, we talked about that last year, that there, the 60% revenue is not being enough to pay for everything we need to pay for out of that 60%, but with the courthouse security, and if you remember, we have a new contract, and that rate went up. We pay for some courthouse deputy security out of there, and then we'd been paying for this position, but it, it's using funds accumulated in prior years, and it'll, it's gonna run out. So I think this might be a good time, if we're going to transfer the supervision to a different department, that the funding kind of splits.
Changes to.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the system admin FTE? The other change I, I'm asking for is kind of a reclassification of a, of a position. So we, we have a network administrator position, but that, that job title in this particular county is, is a little different because we don't have the scope of other industries where they have a lot of network equipment. So the, that particular role actually does a lot more system admin work than actual network administrator. So one of the things that, and just seeing the trends with other, other counties, and I think it would be helpful as, as our department continues to grow, I would like to kind of reclassify that position into sort of a manager, a department manager, sort of an assistant, if you will. As, as I've gotten busier, it, I feel like I need to kind of address being a little more disconnected with the department. And, and I wanna make sure that, that there's just continuity and a succession plan. So this is something that I think would be very beneficial for our department. And, and this, this particular position will have oversight of the entire department, work closely with the director, and have oversight in my absence. And I have been working with HR, and we do have a draft of the job description as well. Any questions regarding that?
This is the easy round.
I assume it's a hired-paid position, so it's approximately kind of what range of ballpark budget increase are we looking at?
I'm gonna need...
Let's see. So kind of similar to some of our other departments, like a deputy director, or deputies, or an assistant engineer. So let me just pull up where I kind of have... Or I could certainly get back to you on the exact second. Right now, I think the, those are currently at like a GS22. I believe that's correct on the non-bargaining scale. And likely would be rising to like a, probably a 10% to 15%. So each pay grade's about 5%. So I expect it's gonna go up, you know, at least like to a GS24.
Okay.
But we haven't necessarily finalized that. But that's kind of how the traditional, when we have that succession plan or somewhat of a org structure that shows managers, that's typically how we look at that. So, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Amanda.
All right. Should we move on to five-year capital? Okay. My capital is nowhere near as exciting as Mike's. I do not have, have no pictures. This is, I was, there's colors up top. There we go.
I tried.
So, pretty standards. One item I will go over here in a sec, but pretty standard stuff. So we have a five-year replacement cycle that we anticipate for computers. This has increased from previous years because of the anticipation of the Sheriff's hardware replacement. The other things under there, they're actually not capital, but Michelle, let me put them on there as reminders. They're more of kind of software maintenance renewals, so that, that's actually part of operating, not capital, so please disregard those. Now the item, if you can see it, it says Sheriff CEGIS MFA compliance. This is a new one. So recently, so the FBI writes the policy for CEGIS. That's Criminal Justice Information Systems. Recently, they implemented a new policy that mandates all sheriff staff have multi-factor authentication locally. What this means is, when I walk up to a computer at the Sheriff's Office, I have to have a second factor to log into that computer. We have MFA turned on for our emails, and that's great. But now they are required to have it at every, every computer. Our infrastructure team brainstormed this. We, we thought about it, and it was, there's a lot of options, but a lot of them are really, really expensive. And what we landed on is a combination of hardware and software, one-time fee, no subscription. That was the goal, is not to have yet another subscription-type service. So what we landed on are these little guys. What I have here is a little, little guy called a UV key. And so it acts as a second fact, second factor. So when I walk up to a computer, this is assigned to me. I'm the only, I'm the only one that can use this. I type in my username, I type in my password, I push this button, it enters a giant password that is generated, and it changes every single day. The idea is to buy one of these for every sheriff staff. Every, every sheriff staff is assigned one. These are like $50 apiece. Doesn't look like much, but they're, they're $50 apiece. Plus the one-time license fee for all those staff that we would have to put on our server. Couple of alternatives that we considered were work phones, but that was, that's not sustainable. And also, in the jail, they are not allowed to take their phones into the facility, so that wouldn't work at all. There are other options that are similar, similar to these, kind of like tokens that randomly generate numbers and stuff like that, but those, those are more expensive than this option. So we, we figured this is probably the best. We kind of estimated the cost of this to about 15,000, and the FBI is expecting us to get this implemented by October. While I, I think it's a good thing, I'm, I'm all for security, it's a good thing, but the timing is not the best. But they, they are the FBI, and they can kind of mandate out whatever they wanna do. So, so we are, we are kind of pushing things around to get this, this, this project done, but it is, it is very important to be under compliance. So that's, that's the one that kind of, kind of hurt us a little bit when we found out. And this was just recently, in the, like, the past, like, two or three weeks, whenever I emailed you that, and Captain's forwarded it to me. So, that was an eye-opener. So any questions regarding that?
If we're leaving it in the, in this budget, do you have time to implement it, versus moving up sooner with an amendment, or?
Maybe. I think, the problem is, we have a lot of things that are contingent before we can implement this. And I, and I think with how our timeline is, I think it'll be just fine to, to start in July, 'cause that's probably about when we'll finally get caught up to have those checkboxes beforehand. So I think we'll be okay. But if things change, I will bring it up before us, and we'll go from there, so.
And you're using something similar on some of the more sensitive servers in the county already?
And so our IT department already has this. I mean, we are the most targeted people. We, the bad guys want our credentials, 'cause we have the most access. No offense to anyone else, we don't give access to other people like this because they're targeted. Case in point, border supervisors. You guys are targeted. Phishing attempts, things like that. It all starts with phishing attempts. So it's very common in, in private and public entities where these CEO, the top people constantly get phished, and then they wanna take their credentials and, and run with it. So we, we have a lot of safeguards in place for the, in case those situations happen. So that's why we have this. And it makes sense to kind of use the same system over at the Sheriff's. So it, on the outside, it may look like overkill, but this is, this is compliance at, at this point. So, and we need to be compliant with the FBI. Or they'll take away access to the, the services we, we need to do our everyday jobs. So that, that is the, that's the teeth that they have. We wanna make sure we keep them happy, so. And the last item I have on here is VMware licensing. This is sort of a, this is a very sore topic with IT professionals. We put an estimated cost because we have no idea what it's going to be. Not to get into me overwhelming too many details, our servers, a lot of our servers run virtual servers. It's actually a physical server that runs multiple software servers, virtual servers. The software that runs the, that system is called VMware. That is the most popular in the industry. They got recently overtaken by a big company called Broadcom. They have null and voided all contracts that everyone has currently had agreements, and they, they are switching to a subscription-based fee system that no one knows, not even any reseller knows what the cost will be. So I am shooting high at this point. It may be lower or higher. I hope it's not higher, but we still don't have any direction from, from resellers. I've been asking multiple resellers. Other people in the industry are just basically waiting for the terrible news that they're gonna have to mortgage something. So it's, it's not going to be great, in, in my opinion, but we sort of don't have a choice because they're, they are one of two vendors that we can use for the virtualization. So they kind of have a, sort of have a monopoly, even though the, that particular realm has a lot of players in the game. We can only use two, because of our backup system only works with two. So hopefully, I will have more direction soon, and then I can maybe update this document and, and help Michelle kind of narrow that down. So. Kind of went over a lot. Any, any questions regarding the capital projects? It's really two items that went around there.
Board, any other questions?
Okay. I think that kind of covers everything. Was there anything else?
No.
Michelle, that we could go over. Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Al.
Thank you. And I'd just like to add that, thank you for, Michelle, for all your work on the budget. I know there's a lot of moving parts, and I appreciate the work that you've done with this. And, and thank you for helping me a lot with this. Appreciate it. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Hey, Michelle, anything else you wanna cover today?
Nothing for today. I think that we have, hopefully, we will have the Health Department, and possibly one other department for Thursday.
Okay.
And then if that's, if you don't wanna do that, I don't know how long that will take. So if you'd rather wait till Tuesday, we could do that too, but that's up to you.
I have fine with Thursday.
Yeah.
All right. We'll get her done.
All right. Very good. We'll move on to any reports or information from the Board?
Anybody?
Hey, not Al.
Well, I was gonna say, I was kind of waiting for everybody to, but just to follow up with the comment. We'd had, you know, Mr. Garnett here last week, and I think it was the kind of a group decision that we needed at least someone else to compare to, or one other group, maybe others if we think of them along the way. But in an effort to try to get this kind of going forward, since we're kind of nearing the end of the year. I know Tavis mentioned talking to Randy Pilgington. I reached out to Drew Conrad, who typically does those presentations. He was saying, "Could he come and just do the options, kind of like Garnett had done, you know?" And so we would see kind of the direction. He said he'd really prefer not. He'd rather us to kind of have some discussions, I guess, among us of what we'd like to take forward, you know, and have them do. And so he provided me a sheet with just five questions, and I thought, rather than us take time, and this is totally up to the Board, but rather than us take time to kind of work through that, if we just each have a sheet, put on what we think to answer these five, and then submit it to them, five different responses, we'd just maybe be the fastest, and everybody could see that we kind of have all responded and go from there. That sound workable, doable?
Yeah, that works for me.
Yep, it's great.
Super. We'll get those out. Thank you.
Any other reports or information from the Board? All right. Here now, entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
Second.
It's a move to second it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.